Thanks, Jess.
Okay.
There's a special item that we placed on just to help the department. They were asking us to support their program for the information in the system systems and this will assist in their obtaining funding from the WPCL They've obtained the funding in the past, but this is the first year they've asked us for a letter of support, which we do support that program. It does provide funding for below the moderate income housing and this is a way for them to get that grant money and then to pass it forward. If you agree with what the letter states, then we can go ahead and let Mary Helen.
I think that's great.
Yeah. So that was pretty easy.
It was an email.
It was an email.
All right.
Thanks, Ms. Laura. It was nice that you came in. Nice to see you. Do you do something different with your hair?
Somebody else asked me that. You know, I just curl it.
And then there's other days where I'm like, no, I just blow it around.
I did. I was like, thank you.
Did you sign your letter? Do you want to sign it or just for me? Um, it depends if, does the board, do you want to sign this letter? Do you want it to come from water resources?
Whatever is most beneficial to them.
Yeah.
It may be for me come from us, but whatever.
Ask Jean, yeah.
I can check because I thought we were signing it either way.
We're okay with either.
Okay, because this is just the drugs and then I can put it on either our letterhead or...
I'd ask Mary Helen what she thinks is best and then, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I'll call her today.
Okay. Thank you.
Good.
Oh, we have Todd.
I think that was in the back.
Yeah, yeah.
Thirty minutes on here.
I wondered why we had so much time. I thought there might be something else that she wanted to discuss.
That was a five-minute thing.
That'll be more.
Oh, God.
Full makeup. Hey, Todd. Hey, Todd.
Do you take that money from the computers? I'll check on.
Okay, so Lloyd had it in his budget?
No.
Well, she said she printed that off yesterday. So why isn't that showing? Oh.
Depends where you get it.
Is this from Munis, Todd? This what you gave us?
Uh, that's data I pulled out of Munis and then organized so it looks nicer, but yes, it's out of Munis.
Well, see, this is the 22,000 is in 2020.
That's because she requested it even back in May.
Okay.
Um, but then...
But we put the money in there already.
We put what we were given estimates for, which was for eight, and an amount of around $6,000.
Ooh, that's kind of quite beautiful.
So it's maybe there's some...
When did we vote? Was that a resolution a couple, was that one I asked about?
Yeah, it was here at the July or beginning of August, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and I had sent you an email on it because there was then, there was one other sort of emergency, I think, that came up with probation.
Does anyone know why there's a delay in the schedule for the replacement of the computers? I mean, like you said, those computers are around four years old and I don't want to get stuck with a one and a half million dollar bill again to replace all of them at once. I thought we were gonna try to...
We are.
Stagger.
That was the goal. You are gonna get stuck with bills. It's not gonna be one and a half, but the bill is coming here partly due to the Windows 7 and 10 and all that, which again, our goal was to not get caught off guard by those things again, but... Anyway.
Okay, I have to use the line.
I guess I gave a list of some questions that I wanted to discuss and today in particular is just your concept of do you want to take the 2020 budget and share the possible reductions that may be needed into 2021? Or do you want to...
Can you guys hold on? I'm gonna go print that email off. So I have it too.
Do you want me to get a copy?
Yeah, I can.
Yeah, I can.
You know, Todd, does that mean layoffs in 2020?
Well, so I've always said the earlier you prepare, the less painful it is because you can do things through attrition.
Right.
But if you want to wait until the last minute, then it is possible. Um, our other goal that we had talked about was providing more modest raises compared to our revenue increases so that there would always be a little extra to begin building up for that type of purpose. Does that make sense? So let's say we get a 2% increase in revenue. We only gave one and a half to the staff, which meant we gained that here, so to speak. That's what we have been doing.
I've got one.
Of course, as you're hearing people come in saying, well, you know, 5% because we're behind in everything else. So there's a certain reality that, did you face?
Yeah, I've got, I've printed mine off.
So we haven't really talked since late last year, I think, regarding what we are doing in terms of sales tax money, what we're doing in terms of the sheriff. Of course, originally you were talking around five people for the sheriff, five to six, and it's coming now that it's 15, um, which is a significant change. Um, a nice thing that right around that same time the state announced that they're giving at least 70% now on the
Indigent.
Indigent offense, so we did gain, you know, we gained a little bit of ground there. Um, so it was a little bit of a shock, but we had some good news too, kind of at the same time, so.
Like always, it's depleted somewhere.
You know, remind me again, Todd, why, how did we go from five to 15? I mean, I can see five to seven or eight, but... But you know what, Todd? I know that's what they said, but I don't think we have got that study, the staffing study from that Mr. Pace they hired.
Yeah, we don't.
He emailed me a couple of weeks ago because I asked about it.
Yeah.
After we went out there to tour it and he said it should be coming. That's a while back.
Well, I know when they canceled with Amy, they indicated that was one of the things they didn't have ready. Is that true? Do you recall?
The staffing report?
So I think their intention is to have that when they come to their budget meeting, which right now I believe is the second.
Next Tuesday or two weeks.
So it's possible we'll see it at that time.
Okay.
We have more explanation. I cleared it there.
Okay.
So regarding 2020, what is your intention towards?
A levy?
A levy and/or preparing for the loss of the money and operating without it, but then sharing that conversion in with the 2020 budget versus leaving it all to the 2021 budget. Um, I would add the caveat that the 2021 budget will be prepared in late 2020, which is also an election time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and sometimes makes those type of decisions more inconvenient to occur right at the same time.
Yeah. Well, I know we had talked about, or I had talked to you about possibly putting the levy on the, um, spring ballot versus in November because that would still give us plenty of time if it doesn't pass decide if we want to do it in November again, or at least we can start planning, gauging what we may have to do if it doesn't pass. Since we didn't do it this year, I think that earlier we put it on there to see will help us with preparations for the reality that if it doesn't pass, what are we gonna do? I mean, we'll have some tough decisions to make. So, I mean, I don't know Kathleen or Vicky, what you think about that, but I don't, I really don't want to wait till November, put on the ballot for the fill and have one and a half months to make drastic changes. I think we need to be able to gauge it and start preparing that.
My position on this is that I don't have a sense, having not been through a budget process, of knowing what, what the need, what the jail built, um, the expansion built on that additional revenue is. And so I'm, I'm interested in getting through a budget process before making a decision about an additional levy.
Yeah, well, it's gonna be very clear. We can tell you now, there is how many people Todd funded right now out of that levy money that will be gone and that does not include the additional staff that's being requested.
There's almost 900,000 in labor currently being funded that would have to be dealt with.
Exactly.
We have the increase of the sheriff. I guess, independent of the levy though, how do you want to proceed with the 2020 budget? Do you want to... I guess you always, you know, prepare for the worst. Do you want to assume that we aren't gonna get any money? See what that looks like in the 2021 and then gauge our raises, our capital programs, et cetera, in the 2020 budget? So that it splits that difference? Or do we want to proceed with the 2020 budget as though it's a normal cycle year? We do have money coming next year. Let's not worry about it. Gauge the raises and capital program on that, leaving all the changes that occur in 2021 if there are changes that will be needed.
Well, I think we should.
I guess that's my question here as we get ready to do the 2020 budget because the next question for you guys will be, well, what, what kind of call can we give? And my answer, well, I'm not sure because I'm not sure what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, and you know what, Todd? I guess it goes back to hope for the best, but plan for the worst because I'm telling you, we need, and it may help Kathleen have a better understanding of what impact it's gonna have if that levy does not pass. If we do not pass the levy, what impact is that gonna have? And you'll probably have a better idea to, to gauge us with that once the sheriff comes in with his report on the additional staffing.
Right.
But until then though, I'm gonna tell you, right now, like you just heard, we've got a million dollars in staffing that when that levy is done at the end of next year, it's done. We have to come up with that, let alone any, the 15 additional staffing. So there is not gonna be enough money.
The biggest worry in that part are the corrections officers because presumably it would be counterproductive to cut them. The rest is the road patrol, which was added to give people a sense of what this money was doing for them.
Is that like 400,000 for the road patrol?
400,000. But then you saw last year when he came up short on his budget, finally 100,000, the court security, everything else was gutted, even though we had these extra road patrols in place. So to cut that, I'm not sure what that would end up looking like if we simply had to cut it. Um, probation has always been under the impression that the three positions that were added through that were, were gone if the funding is gone. Um, they've worked very hard to try and find other grounds, although they haven't been terribly successful. Um, but of course, then it comes down to the judges. Uh, probation department has been strained even with those three and losing them will cause a significant impact. So those are all things to think about, but I guess as we're trying to prepare for what can we accomplish in 2020, the caveat, the caveat always is we have a lot of cash now, but...
If that levy doesn't pass, how much are we gonna have to cut or cut into?
So it sounds like we can hold that off until after the sheriff comes?
I think so.
I want to see the whole budget process go through, um, before I'm ready to make a decision.
Um, between sharing or not?
No.
Okay. On the levy, you mean?
Yes.
Right.
But on your question, yes, I think that'll become clearer.
We'll be coming up on that soon.
You know, if you just look at this year's data and you just look at next year in isolation, I mean, a 3% raise for employees isn't outrageous. If you look at the five-year and what we're trying to accomplish, even a one and a half percent becomes straight. Uh, I mean, I guess to me that's the difference of how, how do you want to look at it?
Todd, I wonder if on, on number one, if you could consider a middle course, like if we didn't get it, if we, if we did continue or pass a levy and then
And we always run those options, yeah.
sort of a cut the difference type of, we're not sure.
Runs different scenarios.
And I can, I can refresh you guys. I don't think we've seen, I mean, the fork hasn't changed a lot since last February. Because we don't have a lot of information to go on. Um, the question has always been how much are we going to leave to the very end? Um, and I I'm not sure right now what the priorities are. Um, are there any other items on the list that you'd like to discuss today?
Let me just say, let me clarify what I just said. On number one, so I see this sort of as a presentation of one way or another and I just was asking for a middle path as well.
Well, I get, so to me, 2020 is a broad spectrum of don't worry about it at all, worry about it all, or do something. And that's what I'm asking is how, how far do you want to go? Because you're gonna get pushed back from the elected officials if you begin tightening right now, saying everything's great and everything is great right now.
I mean, my, my inclination would be to try to split the difference at this point in where we are. But again, I, you know, kind of want to see the numbers on what we're talking about, but it seems like we could do a little bit of both and be in a stronger position depending on what happens than if we didn't do it at all.
Right, right.
But maybe not go all the way in doing it as stress coming in.
Todd, when you're talking about COLA raises, is that in addition to what they're asking for or is that include like what the elected officials are asking for? What are we talking about there?
Well, you know, we call them COLA. The reality is
They're just raises.
they're raises.
Yeah, okay.
You know, so yeah, the 5%, the 3%, everybody's total around them. This, this is the general, the general increase to everyone.
Yeah.
You also passed the merit pay policy. I don't know if you
Mm-hmm.
want to talk about how that's working.
Now, that's an addition, correct?
So that is, although I'm not sure how it's working. We've never talked about it, but that's another issue.
Yeah.
Well, I think you should talk to Janet about that somewhat and get her thoughts on
Where we are.
Yeah.
As far as the merit.
Because I mean, she has the answer because that's really us, but she has information about what she anticipates with the policy, I would think.
I have had those conversations.
Yeah, we have it projected as to what it would appear.
I understand how the evaluation process works. I'm under, I'm not understanding how the money works.
The performance evaluations?
And that's the part that she doesn't know.
What?
So let's say I get the bestest evaluation of everyone in the county. What does that mean?
Um, it should mean merit raise, sorry.
But how?
How does that work? We didn't necessarily spell that out.
That's the idea behind it, but what, what does it mean? Is it, I mean, and we, we've talked about these examples, but we even find in some counties, if you're in this range, it's an automatic extra blank percent. If you're in this range, it's no extra. If you're in this range, you're on probation. I mean, you know...
We did not spell it out like that.
We didn't do that. That's what I've come in saying, we need to budget for whatever you were envisioning. What are we, what are we planning for in terms of that aspect of the raises?
Well, and we're also still planning on, are we going to bring everyone that is going to be spread out over three years? Remember, that was Kelly Jo's request is that her department
All into one.
be funded and we said, we're not gonna fund just one department. We would do all. So we still have, never made a decision on that.
Yeah, as of now, I'm still having out over two more years. It's an allotment next year, an allotment in 2025. We can hold off on that one.
I think that we left that vague intentionally to see what would come of it. I mean, we had a, a valuation process that I think was not necessarily uniform and not every department was doing and it was kind of all a part of that and I think as our departments are keeping us updated, I think we find out more once they've gone through evaluations of, you know, what they would propose. And it may not be all, I mean, the performance evaluations and the process is sort of a rolling process. So I don't, I don't think we have a definitive answer on this because it's somewhat fluid.
When we did the performance evaluation forms, I thought that there, there was gonna be somewhat of a caveat in there for like longevity or some way that you could possibly increase the employee's salary. But that's probably the part that is not clear. Do you remember that, Todd? There was gonna be a hybrid.
I do. I can tell you there is not that in the current revisions that are going around.
So, so just because you get a performance evaluation does not, and mean it's...
Doesn't automatically trigger anything?
Exactly, but you should still be doing them so that people know
And yet, that's where we currently are. I guess evaluations are happening in March. We can't wait till March to decide how much money we want to apply. That decision needs May by December. Does that make sense? I need to know how much money is going to be set aside for this. If you come to me in March and say it, now all of a sudden we're cutting into contingencies, emergency funds, that type of thing that we and, and we can set aside an allotment and not use it all. But the question is how much do you want set aside for that? We don't need that answer today, but that is something to begin thinking about. What does this look like?
Okay, so we need to like choose a 1% and just put that money aside. That doesn't mean that that's going to be, but that's going to be aside for that.
And that could be.
Or you could discuss that around.
Now, with the caveat that you are gonna give that to the elects also and they are going to spend it. Whether they call it merit or not, whatever that equal proportion is for them is, is.
And we need to clarify that, the sheriff, for people who, you know, if we get budgets ordered, you know, that it's not additional to, I mean, I don't know how we can do that, but...
You can't. It was, I mean, that, that whole thing that you didn't exclude them was, you can't. I mean, you didn't include them either.
But you can't exclude them.
You didn't. Like I said, you, you're directed along your departments anyways. So...
I think this is a good thing to keep in mind and we have to continue trying to figure out.
Yeah, because we need at, at least some sort of dollar
Yeah.
portion to set aside for.
Well, didn't you have us a dollar amount for 1%? Doesn't 1% equate to like, what?
Roughly 200,000
Okay.
um, across the county.
See, I, that might be a, a good figure because everybody's not going to get it. Everybody has to know. No, no. I think we should at least have that type of a reserve set aside.
Right, that's what I'm wondering is what, what we envisioning that merit policy being.
Well, I think you, but again, there's so many things missing. And again, I keep coming back to the jail and the impact that's gonna have on the overall budget because that, that ultimately is gonna impact the rest of it.
And we always run into the question of how much are you going to force all employees in the county to bear the burdens of these particular departments versus how much are you gonna turn it back to there? And that's where we keep coming to, you know, that's at one time, let's say the sheriff got a 2% raise on his
Union.
union, but everyone else only got the 1%. We were only adding one to his budget and he was gonna have to make reductions to buy the other 1%, so to speak. We did end that last year. So now the sheriff gets what he gets and then the rest of the county kind of gets what's left, but that does cause a buildup of resentment as that continues. So we'll, uh, we'll come back to that, but it, again, how I don't need commitments that literally is gonna be 3% or 0% or whatever, but we do need an idea of how much money are we setting aside for this process?
What do you, what do you think would be a safe amount? I mean, I thought you had given us 1% months ago that, that that's what you were projecting would be a safe amount?
The other question with the merit pay is going to be related to the non-general funds. Is everyone gonna be held to the same standard if it's 1% in the general fund? Is everybody held to 1%? Or is it going to be on a per-fund basis in terms of how much they can?
But you know, we don't have any control over those other funds, do we?
Well, there are enterprise now.
Well, you appropriate for every fund. So no one can spend beyond what you appropriate, but within your departments you do. For example, you're, you currently have your commissioner's department and your building inspection. Those are your only two 100% generally funded departments. You then have like HR, which has some employees in the general fund, some employees in the human, uh, employee benefits funds. And then you have, for example, Ryan where he has technically his own fund, but he relies upon general fund to achieve anything extra. In terms of the merit raise, is what you're going to apply to the general fund going to be consistent to all funds or are the other funds going to be allowed to choose their own parameters based on their funding availability?
So like the enterprise then, it's like water resources.
And for other elected officials, to Vicky's point, you don't necessarily have control, but within your own departments, you do have a lot of outside extra funding. Um, and the question is whether those directors are gonna come with their individual proposals based on their funding availability or whether across the commissioners' departments, it's going to be standardized, which usually means the general fund sets the pace because it's the most restrictive fund. Again, I, we don't need answers today, but those are things to think about um, as you implement that policy, how... Um, the Pretty Glen dam, again, I know we didn't even mention, we were gonna talk to it today. The reason I asked specifically about that project, you'll recall, two years ago or so, the state gave a one-time allotment of funds to replace the MCL losses. We had sort of designated that fund as being what we were going to use to do the Pretty Glen dam. Um, the key is that money is still sitting and, um, the state will begin to ask about
What are you doing?
Well, it was such an emergency, why is it still there?
An O D N R, we honest.
It's, it's really just an accounting shuffle, but if we are gonna pursue Pretty Glen, then we need to deplete that fund next year through some means. Um, and then the dam will need funded within the regular budget when it does happen.
But you know, Todd, that's something that we have, that's gonna have to be done. It's not something we have a choice. Yeah, I don't know why we keep kicking the can down the road because the longer we wait, the more it's gonna cost. And I thought the last, I remember, and this is probably a year or two ago, Joanne was looking about, she was working with them about, um, the, um, criteria and what exactly was required with Pretty Glen and remember we had, I think we had...
Well, we were ready to go and get the easements of what we would need from the property owners.
Yeah, the easement from the property owners.
Um, I believe that project is waiting on more direction from the board.
Okay, I'm confused.
I can check on that.
Because I thought we were moving forward with it and
With?
It has like fell off the radar.
With demolition or with
Yeah.
Repair?
Because we could get grant money to remove it, but we can't get grant money to repair it. And we had people come in. Do you remember that? I mean...
Is this a Joanne project?
Well, she's a part of it, but...
Okay, so for now, will we have money?
Yeah, but I do think we need to address that like as soon as possible. Yeah, and, and you know, we probably need to ask Joanne for a status update on that project.
And, um, the other issue is we, we've been preparing for the jail addition for some four years now.
Yep.
Um, and, and as people have quit, we have not replaced and that has allowed us to build up, up, up a cash balance. There are a lot of things we can do with that cash balance, one of which is simply let it get whittled away in trivial expenses, which would be heartbreaking to me. Another thing is to engage in some of the larger capital projects. We've talked about remodelings in this building, dealing with the annex, dealing with Riddle, dealing with the Ravenna Courthouse, um, which all require significant sums of money to do anything with. Um, or a third option is paying down some of our existing debt, which will then help future, future operations since you don't have that debt payment now to, to make. We were approached early, not early, maybe a few months ago, about refinancing this year and
Interest has dropped, huh?
Because interest has dropped. I, I do believe if we wait into next year, we're not gonna lose too much ground because interest is gonna continue to
They're down the way down, yeah.
Hold. Um, so I didn't feel there was a rush. So I didn't feel there was a rush to do it this year. My other, um, issue with trying to do it this year is we're still uncertain where man away is headed and how much we're gonna spend next year on that. Um, if there's a possibility of issuing debt next year, I would hate to refinance this year and then turn around an issue. It makes sense to do it altogether. So my recommendation was for nothing to happen this year, but there is that possibility next year of refinancing existing debt, which will save us money and/or paying down some of that debt while we refinance, which will save even more in terms of principal payments. Or doing some of these major capital projects. You know, when Mike came, we kinda put all talk on this building on hold cuz he didn't feel that was worth putting the money into. I don't know if that's still the board's thoughts. But, you know, we had a eight hundred fifty thousand dollar estimate on the sixth floor. You can assume there was at least that on the second floor. And then, of course, we still have the board of elections saying that they appreciate what was done, but that more is still needed. So those are just some questions also to keep in mind.
You know, Todd, I, I think that's a hard thing to decide. Does this building, is it worth putting money in this building? I mean, I, I don't know, I'm not.
Yeah.
That's not my expertise. We, we need somebody to tell us because I do think we should choose one capital project each year. It doesn't have to be a huge one, but I mean, we, we need to start working on this.
Make progress, absolutely, yeah, yeah. And I agree that, um, we need to come up with a plan for the building and then follow it and we may need help making that plan.
Right. So we need.
We've been saying that for a year and a half now.
Exactly, exactly. So we need to get a consultant to like BS architect to come in and.
Well, I've always, here's.
With the space use.
That, that is certainly a possibility. I, I.
Because the longevity on this building.
I get frustrated with constantly bringing in consultants. We allow them to talk.
And then we don't do anything.
And then we're shocked by the.
Sticker.
Figure. I mean, that's what happened on the sixth floor. That's what happened with the board of elections, in part because more people are involved in those conversations to say, no, 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 that's not what we're thinking. You know, and providing some dollar guidance as to what we want to have happen. In my mind, the county could go a long way towards sitting down with itself. Meaning the commissioners with the other elected officials involved in whatever buildings we're talking about and seeing what their thoughts are just in terms of, you know, what are simple fixes versus what are major fixes, sorting that out at least and then calling the consultant in and saying, you know, here's our ideas, can you professionally help refine or sort or whether these are bad ideas or not. Uh, but just having to come in with a blank check, spewing all over the wall and then realizing, oh, that's not what we wanted has been counterproductive in the past. And like I said, we've, we've done the sixth floor, we've done the board of elections. We did another building. Uh, while we had an architect work on the motor pool. You know, and now we're getting rid of it. So to me, before you even go to that professional level, we have some sorting that we could do.
But who would answer the question, Todd? Is this building worth putting money into? I mean, who?
Well, I think that's when you start hearing people like, you know, and I don't wanna call anybody out, but you know, Janet S. Vazito likes her space very much. I think Laura Kelsey likes her space. Of course, they've had the remodeled floors. Um, but that shows you that, you know, it can become enjoyable space. I know the sixth floor.
Yeah.
It's dreary and it's still the old hospital style. Seventh floor is good-ish, but it's kinda in the middle of that. You know, you have the fifth floor and fourth floor that were totally remodeled, the third floor where we used to be, are some very nice offices.
And the treasurer's office, yeah.
The treasurer's office. Um, the fourth floor has kinda tried to be kept with updates, but it is still kinda clunky with some of these divisions and whatnot. And then you have the sixth and the second floor in particular, along with the back end or the middle section, I guess, of the first that are just sort of dead space because no one wants to be in them. Uh, and then, of course, the annex is its own little monster. But I think sitting down with some of those people that are in those spaces and seeing what their thoughts are in terms of, even if you did, the whole building's too small, or even if you did this, we would still need, that will give you an idea with whether those buildings we're salvaging or whether we do need to think about moving on.
Well, for maximum, that gives us the longevity on our properties. We're only halfway through the expected life of this building.
Well, there's no, there's no doubt that the building will still be standing to fifty years. The question is whether the county is still using it. You know, I mean, and, and whether we're using it for everything we have now or whether we need to divide.
Exactly.
Well, I think that that answers. Well, that answers my question though. If the building's still gonna be standing in fifty years, maybe we should put money in.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean physically, the walls are gonna be here.
I think we do. I mean, the whole thing with the county buying these extra lots next to us, I don't even know which way.
We don't want a lot of land around here for you to expand.
Is, was to expand. And even if we tear the annex down or, you know, we could maybe build on to like the board of elections end or expand that out. I mean, there, there's a lot of opportunity here.
But getting, getting that thing in place then takes our cash balance and all of a sudden says, ooh, we don't have this glorious surplus. It's, we now see where it's going and realize we don't have it. And that isn't in place right now, so it makes it difficult for some of the other participants in the county to realize that we don't have a slush fund that they can dip into anytime they choose.
What if when we do the, uh, budget hearings, um, the second round, which is more the proposed budget and the opportunity to provide feedback, if we reach out to some of the departments that have major facilities and ask them if, when they come in, do their budget, if they could come in, if, if they can spend a portion of time talking about facilities and.
Board of elections does that, but we see what they want the top building.
Yeah. Um, I mean, the judges have repeatedly indicated that Riddle is not optus snuffer, whatever you wanna call it.
But yet they don't wanna move from there though.
Well, they wanna keep those people close. They wanna keep those people close. They don't necessarily wanna stay in Riddle, but they wanna be in that area, which, again, when you look at some of those buildings, is either purchasing, remodeling, et cetera, but to make Riddle good is, and that's where you have to ask the question, well, are you better off buying this building and remodeling it cuz it's easy to remodel or trying to remodel Riddle? Riddle is a very old building, which makes it very, very difficult to allow.
It's a money pit and it's not laid out very good.
But there is a building just south, you know, that often has vacancies and those type of things, but those are the things to look at of, like, we do want probation to be close to there. Now, the child, um, whatever that department is.
Children protectors or child support.
Yeah.
C E S A.
You know, they don't need to be close to the courthouses, so that's something where if they were at a different location. So when it comes right down to it, yeah, the public defender would like to be close, although they have offices in the courthouses, so they don't need to be right, right there, but they can't be on the other side of town. I mean, those are the type of things where you start asking, okay, well, these group of people do need to stay closer, but that's far less than the totality of Riddle as a whole. Um, I know Kelly Jo, and I think even this year, she's come up about the annex. And I'm, on that one, I'm not sure even if you did get the whole thing and rebuild it, that it would be adequate for what they wanna use it for. They just have a lot of people crammed in that building. But the basement is dusty and musty and it's possible that if that were cleaned up, people at least feel better than that type of thing. So we do have some idea, but yeah, we can also.
We do move people out of that building into the third floor.
They did take some out. And I would say.
So that has changed. That situation is, is not what it was.
Is there anybody in the annex moved now?
They're not, oh, yeah, they're not sardines anymore.
Right.
But they are still tight and it is still, again, the, the, they call it the basement, basement or first floor. I mean, it's constantly out of, from my understanding, and it's just musty and, you know, smells emanating it.
Yeah, okay.
Those type of things. Um, so it's still not an ideal building to be in.
And I guess we have to ask ourselves, is that building worth doing something with? Is that building gonna be standing in fifty years?
That, that's a good question and, um, you know, we, we put a new roof on it last year and all the siding, so it does look much better. Um, and chances are viably, the walls would still be there, but it, it does have some issues. It has ADA issues, it has a lot of other issues. So is it proper for a governmental building? I don't know. But it does, it does need some more major work in terms of both the heating and air conditioning. And I think Joanne came and asked you about preparing some of those items even this year, whether you had wanted to proceed, and we did proceed with some of it. Uh, but those are all, those are all issues that we discussed out in the open and talked about so that you have an idea what people are thinking. And then from there, we can refine what we want that professional to help us do so that it's actually within a scope that we're willing to do.
So first, I think with that annex, but we're gonna have to decide, what do we wanna use it for? Because like you said, it's not conducive to J F S, it really isn't.
Right.
So who could go in there?
Can somebody else go there and/or, um, you know, does that mean purchasing another building, which I, I'm reluctant to say those words cuz we own too many facilities. That's the is. The key is if you got rid of Riddle and annex, it may be justified to get one more building instead of the two. I mean, those, those are things that I'll talk about.
But you know, we haven't even sold regional planning yet, where they were.
And we're still sitting on the motor.
Yes.
So.
That's station thirty. You know, Ryan brings that up to me at least.
That we could empty that out as well.
Yeah, every couple of months. He says, what are we doing for that?
And those are things where I think we need to get a more cohesive plan going so that the second and third steps happen rather than always talking about the first step.
We had a look at the.
And then on that regard, I don't think we need professional help. I think we just need.
Make a decision.
To get ourselves on the right track. Um, and we've been saying that for a while. The airport's along a similar lines. We all talk about what we know it needs, but then we just keep saying that that's what it needs. Um, we need to begin proceeding of how do we go to step two now? How do we get to step three? Those are the conversations we have to start having. And those, those again play into, you know, what does that make our five years look like if we're not building anything? We have a lot of money if we're gonna start remodeling building. Money goes quick when you start constructing.
You know, Todd, and number three, that comprehensive plan, would that take into consideration some of these things we're talking about right now?
Not, not literal facilities. That's more land use and, and those type of things.
Just something we definitely need to put in place, get it going next year.
So.
Talking about it for a while now.
Um, did we touch on all the items?
Uh.
Oh, pro, number four. You know, we improved our computer infrastructure with the idea that it would now be able to handle some of these modern technologies. However, those modern technologies cost money to implement. So, for example, HR has, um, you know, programs that allow you to apply online and allow you to sort employees online, but those software's cost money. The question becomes how much are we going to move into the modern era and find a way to reduce expenses elsewhere versus how much are we just gonna keep operating as we are and saying that there is no money for those type of things? That's kinda what number four is sort of getting to is what projects and services could we be providing if we did some of these upgrades versus what services are, are we providing that perhaps could fall by the wayside to facilitate that? But we have a lot of departments talking on that front. You know, Judge Jolio came in with the C P O cards. I mean, they've been around for seven years, five, seven years anyway. Um, we did finally get those and that's a good improvement to the service we're providing those people, but it costs us five thousand dollars a year roughly to do.
And Vic came in with, you know.
Like e-discovery, yeah.
Right, the e-discovery, that's gonna cost us money. So, and, and some ways.
But in the long run, will it save us, Todd?
You know, in some ways, no, because, um, it saves, it saves staff time here, but it's not like we're gonna lay off that staff. We just use them for other things.
Right, right.
However, what it does mean is that possibly for the money we're spending, people are getting even more service overall because they're getting this service quicker and more efficiently, which gives employees time to do these other services. So money wise, no, I don't think it's a savings effect. It's gonna increase the operation of the county, but in terms of delivering our product at the end, it might. Now, where you do make the savings is where you say, well, you know what? Here's some things that are just archaic and we really don't need to do anymore and we do away with some of those items. And that's, I think, hard to look at because people like continue as they are. But that's how you make room for these newer innovations. So that's kinda where four was at in terms of you to think about. We talked about three. And again, we talked about two, um, you know, is our priority gonna be to get capital done? Are we gonna go for the polar raises first? I mean, what? As we start whittling out the budget, what are some of the first things that are gonna begin getting reduced? We don't need answers on that today, but those are things for you guys to think about as we proceed.
It seems like these depend on each other's.
They are all retired. And that's why I'm saying it's gonna be very difficult for me to even do forecasts without answers on these discussions, let alone trying to put a budget together. I did not send the letter out that we discussed during Brad's meeting in part because I'm not even sure we can make an October, early October proposed budget. I meet with you today and I meet with you again on the twenty-sixth, um, for half an hour, and that is not a lot of time to begin hitting at some of these. We won't even hear from the sheriff until the seventeenth. So I'm thinking we will be lucky to get a proposed budget out by end of October, early November, but I wanted your thoughts on that because that is starting. Although last year, last year, we did it late October too, but, uh, I mean, that, it, it doesn't give elective officials a lot of time to review what they're talk, what they're looking at.
Well, could you come in before that? I mean, what about next week and?
Right now, your Thursday's are full with, uh, cuz next week is almost all tied up with budget hearings.
Budget hearing.
Um, and then there was something else going on, budget hearings and something else that was taking a lot of time out of your schedule.
Okay, where did we leave number one, Todd? Because you're saying you need.
All of these we've left that we're gonna talk more about later. My, my primary question to you is what do you need from me to facilitate the discussion? Uh, but you can get back to me on that.
Crystal ball?
Yeah. The next question was what, what kind of schedule, we told Brad we would get a letter out explaining the schedule to everyone. I hate sending a letter saying we're gonna do it by end of September and then he missed that cuz then you would, you know, what are you guys doing?
Well.
And I'd hate to send that knowing realistically, I don't think we can do it.
Okay, so it says here, in late September, early October, recommend budgets are sent to the departments. And then late October, early November, budget hearings are held for those that are not satisfied.
Yeah, our goal was always to do those before Thanksgiving, but you could be doing those at the last minute too. I don't know. We haven't really talked about either when your last day is in December. Last year, we had it very early and that's why we had to get everything done before even Thanksgiving so that we ourselves had time to talk and finalize numbers. So how late you go in December, December kinda opens up that room in November to still, to still be here.
Hopefully, it should be the nineteenth.
Yeah, there's only one more Thursday. That's the day after Christmas.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I think, you know, Kathleen, did you ask for something in number one, like in, at middle of the road thing here? I mean, cuz that's kinda what he's saying.
Yeah.
Was.
Or projections.
Yeah, to do it like both, in both years to kinda.
Share a little of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to see what that looks like.
What that was like.
To see what, and again, part of that's gonna be reflective, a big part of it's gonna be reflective after we meet with the sheriff and hopefully finally get the numbers.
I just always like to have the most information available when I put out my forecast because you well know that as soon as my forecast goes off, panic and discussions begin because everybody reads into the number of what they see. And so it's difficult to use that forecast as a planning tool while all the other chatter's going on. So I hate to put out a forecast that is.
Not realistic.
You know, skewed too far one way because then people become latched onto it. So that's part of why I haven't prepared one, but I can begin getting your forecast. Again, just always with the caveat that as soon as those come out, you always have this person panicking over what they're.
Well, I think you need to, we need to start looking at the forecast as soon as we can. And again.
Todd, I think you can put in next week. I'm, I'm looking at next week's schedule and I don't see why we couldn't have you in for a half hour. I mean, look at today, we had a half hour scheduled for water resources. It was like two minutes.
I'm happy, I, I can be on call.
Yeah, I think that there's.
Okay. So we'll talk next week. Um, are you okay with holding the letter till we talk next week so that we have a better idea? Or do you want me to send that letter out?
I don't think you have a good feel for the timing on that letter, do you?
I personally don't, but again, if you guys wanna set a date, then come hell or high water, we'll meet it. We can do that.
Would you wanna draft a letter and show it to us and then?
Then we'll date it later.
Well, I mean.
I mean, it's a simple letter. We're going to put proposed budgets out by.
Yeah.
That's what I don't know.
You need to know the dates.
I mean, and we know the final, the final will be passing in December. I mean, we always just kinda put that, if you can put the nineteenth, then we just say the end of December. The big thing is when the proposal coming out. That's what everybody's chomping at the bit to know about.
Well, you could put that the passage of the appropriation budget can be December nineteenth. I mean, that's our last meeting date. That's normally when we would pass it. And then, um, and you're thinking.
Last time you guys passed it on like the third, didn't you?
Cuz that was our last meeting in. Cause that was our last meeting of the year. It just has to be passed by the thirtieth, or the thirty-first, I guess.
Yeah, so the nineteenth is not too late. So what do you need from us now, Todd?
So, um, I'll be on call for next week is my understanding. I, if you guys can think about which of these topics you'd like to refine more, if there's other topics, questions that you have. These are sort of my questions. And then what information would you like me to have ready so that we can get further in the discussions? And we'll put that all together for next week.
I missed what you said about why, what your reasoning is for a December date. You want it as late as possible in December? What about the twelfth?
For the passage of year?
No, the nineteenth.
Yeah, we can pass any time you want. The, I guess the key to going later in December is if we get the proposed out later, that allows us to have hearings.
Yeah.
Even into the end of November for departments to come and say, oh, you don't understand, this budget won't work for me. Because the key is once they come in and say that, we still have to meet again to say, well, yes or no to those last minute, please.
What's the, it seems like doing it a little earlier than the week before Christmas is helpful for county staff who have to get ready for the start of the fiscal year on January one. Like, maybe we should shoot for the twelfth. We don't have to do it as early as the third. Just something to think about. I don't know if we need to pick this today, but I don't know that it's been, you know, we gotta go to the last possible moment. So I don't wanna, by doing that, then kind of make it harder on people during the holidays, um, who have to do all the work of getting ready, closing the books and opening the books with the new budget. So just. Well, it all depends on when we get our stuff together. I mean, I think that's what's gonna determine it. We're already, it seems like, behind and we're lacking in information to make a lot of decisions regarding the budget period.
Why are we behind? Are we behind? It doesn't seem like we are.
We have not had a lot of discussions on these things. I mean, normally by now, we should have been discussing all this stuff, I think.
I think, um, I'm disconnected from, from knowing a lot of what you're thinking because we haven't had discussions this year, particularly with some of the items. We also have the added pressure that a lot of these issues that have been being put off, or s- I mean, twenty twenty-one is the date. I mean, you can't put beyond that. You passed a five-year thing, and for five years, we've been talking about it. We sort of have some flexibility next year, but again, some of these big decisions on what are we gonna do are starting to come, and they're starting to impact my ability to see beyond. You know, four years ago, the five-year ended with the sales tax. Now the five-year, I mean, even three years in, it's a big question mark of what are we doing? I think the other issue is we had kind of some plans on some of our buildings, and those were put aside, and the new plans were put aside. And so right now, we really don't have any plans on our facilities. And so again, it's hard for me to look at the five-year. You know, the five-year becomes my basis for what we can do within the current year, particularly regarding cola clauses and are they sustainable and those type of questions. And so right now, partly because of the income tax and partly because of our facilities, um, it's, it's more difficult for me to see into that future than it's ever been, and that's, I'm a little panicked. In terms of putting one year out though, we can do anything we want for twenty twenty. It's not gonna kill us because we have marvelous cash mouths. But it will catch up with us the next year.
But that's a big misconception though, is people are coming to us asking for raises way above three percent because they see that and they hear that.
We haven't done a lot of the capital, and that's why.
They don't understand.
And it does go quick when we start making those decisions. Uh, but it's helpful to have those to be able to turn to them and say, well, no, here's why we have this. It's four. And, um.
We have to give a response.
All in one delivery.
Right now, we have less of an ability to do that than I think we have.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
We'll go next.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. I guess thanks. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Let me just say, um, for Amy, I think we should reach out to Joanne about this.
Pretty good, damn.
Pretty good, damn.
I already texted her to come up today when she comes up here shortly.
I would for a little more notice than today.
Well, no, she would have, she should have an update. I want a status on where we're at because this is sort of like falling off our radar. So.
But you were planning to talk about it today? Do you wanna talk about it today, Nikki, or do you wanna give?
I'm gonna ask whether you wanna talk about it or not. I'm gonna ask for planning purposes where we're at with it because it does matter. And as you just heard, you know, we've got a lot of things that we haven't even touched on that need to be talked about, and we're behind schedule as it is. So do whatever you two want, but I will be asking about it just to see where we're at with it.
Thanks, Todd.
Is there someone you'd like me to get?
No, he's here, he's here.
Oh, is this as much of your heels, pal?
I'm holding your heels. Yeah, you can certainly hang out or sit up here, I suppose, just as easy. See, hot seat.
Todd rounded up for you.
He did, yeah. Smooth the edges off our discussion. Okay. So I had, I, I believe you have some information I provided to Amy, but in addition to that, do you have the memo that I provided you back in, uh, May thirty-first that I sent upstairs to you?
No.
Okay, I brought copies just in case.
Okay. I was gonna say, we haven't had it.
This was, this was sent to you back then, but I didn't know what you had in front of you. So, there you go. That's step one.
Did you bring an extra copy for Amy at all? If not, I can give her mine.
I did not. Uh, and then, um, do you have our Munis report for the budget for this year in front of you? I thought Todd might have.
Is that what this is on?
That's that, good.
Yeah, yeah, we got that.
All right. Uh, let me, if you don't mind, let me share with you what I have in front of me, um, which is right out of Munis. And it's probably corresponding numbers, but, uh, if you wanna pass them down.
Yeah.
Just so we're all looking at the same pages.
Kathleen?
Uh, and again, I assume you'd have that. So with that said, if we can take a look, um, at, um, at the budget here. This was printed in Munis today, so it's accurate for two thousand and nineteen. And so using, using my little letter from the thirty-first under, um, personnel services, if we can go through that together, I, I can share with you what my thoughts were and the, and some revisions that I now have. Because as we talked earlier, we looked at a budget earlier, uh, just a couple of weeks back, and we looked at those numbers where we were able to, by the changes in the building department staffing, we were able to reduce the bu- the overall budget salary numbers quite a bit, as you recall. Uh, and so this being the two thousand and nineteen, under the employees, uh, full-time, originally, of course, in my little summary on the thirty-first, uh, we had removed Charles Corcoran's salary from the budget and replaced it with my salary under part-time. We had the addition of Joe Bognar as the deputy director. We knew that. That was in the salary budget. And then the next three, um, we're looking at the clerical staff or the office staff of the building department. And in my summary at that time, when I was looking at these, um, I was looking at our grade descriptions and the salary levels for those grade descriptions and found that, um, each one of the people, the office manager, the clerk two and clerk one, uh, were below the, the bottom line. And my goal at that time in talking to, uh, to Linda and going through some of these was to get them up at a midpoint between the low and the mid. That was, that's what these numbers reflect. However, uh, in revision to that, looking backwards through Janet and human resources, I found that as a result of the salary study that you had done.
Yeah.
That there were some numbers that I was unaware of, that you had already approved.
Yeah, to bring them up to the minimum.
To the min- and, and I learned this by accident. Through my investigation. So what I'm, I'd like to say to these salary budget numbers is that, um, what I will do with Todd is we'll go back to the salary budget numbers and we'll interject the, was it Clemson Nelson study numbers that you already.
The rear increase that.
Right, over the three-year period. I will re-interject those properly because I just didn't have them. And, uh, we'll put those into play for the budget as you've already approved, and that number should come out to about where we were in our discussions a couple of weeks back when we were talking about the salary of one individual and the revised budget numbers that were driven down by all the changes. So I just, that's all I can say at this point. So I will do, I will do that diligently to put those numbers together, but I just, within the last few days, learned about this salary change. So that will take care of the, um, at least I'll answer the full-time statements under the employee numbers that I talked about. Now, if we go to the next line under contractual services, and that's referred to on page two, cause that's all the salary items that are in, uh, under personnel services. What we did there is I, I made some recommendations based on the numbers we had, line items. The first being, uh, under contractual services, the total of, of three thousand, I had suggested that remain the same. Under training of, of five hundred dollars, and what contractual services, well, let me stop there to share with you what, what that is. It was when we, when we were having people come in to do, uh, work like plan reviews under contract. That was put into play. But we don't know if anything else might pop up during two thousand and twenty. So I wanted to leave that in as a just-in-case number. It was there. It's existing. But we could lea- leave that in, although we've used nothing of it because of how we structured the department this year. Uh, with the changes we made with personnel staff, we didn't need to use that as a, as a, um, potential pigeonhole to put some, some of those training, or put some of those work in for contract services, especially with plan review. Training is, we're gonna retain that as the same. Purpose there is, uh, if we have to go out to educational seminars that we're required under state law to take to, for continuing ed, some, there, we didn't have any this year, which was good. A couple of the services, especially for the electrical people, have been canceled due to lack of participation. And that's due to the fact that more and more jurisdictions are reluctant to let people go for a long period, for a period of time because they're shorthanded or to pay for those services. Uh, the travel falls into the same category, so if the person had to go to Columbus, it'd be a travel cost. So we've maintained those the same, although we haven't used any because we just don't know what's gonna pop up and we need to be protected. Uh, our membership dues, um, we've increased slightly, uh, to, um, from four forty to five hundred because the cost of our memberships are going up, uh, to the associations that we need to belong to. ICC and FBOA, which is the five county building officials associations that we get our education through to maintain our state licensing. So I've increased that. Um, it was four forty-five. The new budget is at four, or this new revision was at four fifty, so we're gonna go fifty dollars on that per year. Um, the telephone, um, we, uh, brought that up.
How is it zero?
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out. See, we had seven, well, here's, in this budget line, if you look at, was, it was zero prior to this. And because the telephone, I think, just came out of general services, best I can attribute. And now departments are starting to get charged for the, because we have the new phones, new services. And so we, we were at zero in the two thousand and eighteen. The two thousand and nineteen, well, we went to seven hundred, and you can still see we've, we've only been charged three hundred and six. But what we, we looked at is we saw increases coming, so, uh, I suggested an increase to cover the actual cost of, uh, for budget for the twelve hundred is what I was looking at doing there. Uh, and maybe, Todd, you can speak to the telephone line. Do you know how that's gonna be charged?
Yeah, well, we were working on the AT&T contract. That's why the zeros showed up because then we put in actuals each year.
Yeah.
Um, we're actually still having issues. Um, the, the nice thing is the whole bill is roughly the same, but how departments are being charged is varying.
Okay.
Um, the key is that's one line that we adjust throughout the year. Departments aren't held accountable. Have to tighten other areas if that goes over recently at budget or.
Right.
Conversely, if it comes under, they don't get to spend that money. We take it because it was needed somewhere else.
Right. That's what I assumed.
It's still in flux. Um, it's getting better though.
Randy, I'm looking for advertising. Is there advertising here?
No, there, there is, there is none in this line item.
So you're saying you want five hundred dollars, so the.
For the notices.
Yeah.
So where was the, the notices coming in?
Yeah.
Was advertising.
Where they coming from before?
So when you budget, you budget the whole group. So simply because there isn't any money in advertising, doesn't mean a department can't advertise.
Okay, they just take it from another.
Yeah, they had extra travel money, then that's what was used to do the advertising.
Move it around. Yeah, we did have an advertising budget. That was for notices in the papers and things like that when we, when, for example, when Board of Building Standards, our Board of Building Appeals has a case.
You have to advertise.
Have to advertise it. So, yeah, they dropped that and changed it so we can aggregate it into another category, I assume.
Do you know where it is in here?
Uh, Todd, that would come out of.
Well, like notices is probably postage, um, like the mail.
Postage, okay.
All right.
Advertising tends to be right now a record curvier budget.
Yeah.
Um, although we are, um, trying to only utilize that when state law requires, going to other, you know, internet and those type of things.
The only time my office would have that is when there's a Board of Building Appeals hearing.
Yeah.
We have to put that in the paper because that's in the resolution.
In fact, a lot of times those might even come out of commissioners' budget because it's an official meeting.
Yeah, and, um, we act, and, and part of our postage, what, that was three, and we updated to four was, well, two things for that purpose. But we actually may find now, because of the changes that we made, every plan review that was done, commercial and residential, up to shortly after I got on scene, was sent out certified mail. And that raised the postage rates dramatically. But I changed the method by which we do our plan reviews that is still very co-compliant and approved by the state. But we don't have to send it out certified mail. So we were able to cut the cost by doing it that way. So that number actually, well, we'll probably, we'll have the four in there just again for the, these advertising and other pieces. But what we need to do is we may find after a year of working with this that we can reduce that line item because of actual practice.
Okay.
Now, when we get into, uh, maintenance and repair, and the next item, vehicle maintenance, this is, this, this is one that we don't, this is an unknown because we're now getting the vehicles put on our budget, and so we're learning as we go.
Right.
So what I did was is I took some of the actual numbers that we've accrued, uh, for fuel and those items and rolled those into this. So what, what we really done is has said, well, that the, the maintenance repair budget was really not used, so we're gonna move and increase it to thirty-five hundred under vehicle maintenance. We'll increase that line. And the last item was your software. That's our software system that runs the building department, and that's an annual license fee that we pay for the ISIS software. That's been that same number for, for quite a few years. It's gone up over time, but it's, uh, it's an annual fee for all the licensing that we have for every seat, and the seats being, of course, each computer that has it on. We have, uh, everybody has one, everybody that needs one has one, let's put it that way.
So you feel that'll stay the same?
Yeah, it's not gonna change. We've already talked to the supplier and he said the numbers will stay the same.
And again, Randy, I see that you have a previous budget of zero. You're just itemizing more.
We're clearly trying to put, I wanna put this in a, in a light that is easy to follow by anybody. So you don't have to have special knowledge to find that line item and make sense of it, what, what's in that line item. And for some reason, previous to that, we had, the budget was zero. But we always have to pay this money.
Yeah.
And who knows? I can't explain why that was or why it wasn't, but I can tell you that it's a factual number that we are required every year to pay if we wanna maintain that, uh, that license to use that software, which is what drives our department and keeps our records.
There's been talk in the past, Randy, wanting to upgrade that software.
Yes.
Is that still on the list?
No. I, I've experienced the new version of that software, Todd, and it's not worth the price. It's more cumbersome. It's more, it's much more cumbersome to work with, and it's, it provides less in- information.
So they need to just work on that.
There was talk of even replacing it with different, we didn't, we're not interested in that.
I'm not gonna spend any money. What we have works absolutely wonderful. We don't need anything else. There's no reason. There's no reason to spend, there's no reason to spend money. I'm not, as you ladies know, especially Sabrina, you and Vicky, this is, I'm used to dealing with fifty million dollar budgets. And itemizing those in three-ring binders that are, seven of them, that are three inches thick on a five-year plan. So, I'm not gonna let little things slip through the crack here. These are, if we need something, it is gonna be a very substantial reason and a lot of supporting detail is supportive so that you can make an informed decision. So, then what that does is if we drop down into materials and supplies, really, the bottom line number in the center is the total of materials and supplies is twenty-two, which is an aggregate of, uh, items forty and fifty. And that, that's the magic number that we need to work with. If that number, if we can live within that number for all the things we do, for the vehicles and for the phone and for our postage and all those pieces, that's really the aggregate number that we're budgeting, that we need to live in. And if, if that works, then we're gonna be, we'll, we'll, we'll always have money in case we have an emergency.
Right. How many vehicles does your department have?
We have three.
You have three?
Now, and that will come in the, the next probably round. We just got a brand-new vehicle through Enterprise.
Yeah.
And I have to tell you, I, I've done fleet management and this is gonna work wonderfully.
Oh, God.
Now, we're the guinea pig in a lot of cases.
Okay.
We just took our first truck to auction. So, we're the first one, we're the first department to get a new vehicle. We're the first, uh, department to take a vehicle to auction. So, we're learning as we go. And so, I told Joanne, I said, well, we'll be the guinea pig. I don't mind. I, I know what to do and I've been through this many times with three hundred and fifty vehicles or whatever. And I said, so, uh, I'll help all I can. But yeah, it's gonna work well. Um, I like the, I like the idea of the lease. I like the idea of the cost. I like the idea of the maintenance. Uh, and so, what we did is we, as I mentioned to you the last time, we had two vehicles that were two thousand and eight vintage. And one of them, by, not only by its higher mileage, but by other things, was worthless to spend more money on. So, we took both of the two thousand and eight vehicles, they're twins. In fact, succession serial number, VIN numbers, took them down to Sarsone Ford and said, look, shake some things off of this, put it on this lower mileage one and we'll make it road-worthy as our third vehicle for backup.
Wow.
Because if one goes down, we're down. And then, we gotta look for a car and, and as Joanne pointed out, we can always lease, but I don't wanna spend more money if we don't have to.
Right.
We own that vehicle.
Right.
So, we're gonna make it last as long as we can. But in the not-too-distant future, we're gonna have to look at that because it's got nearly a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it and it's, it's like an old horse that's been rode hard and put away a while, if I may. And it's, uh, it's, it's, it's getting, it's seen its better day.
Right.
And so, is it safe? Yes. Is it road-worthy? Yeah, it is. But I don't wanna put-
I think maybe next year.
Good money after bad.
The twenty-one?
Yeah, we'll be looking. But at the prices we got the new vehicle at, which is, wow. I told, I told Dexter, who's driving the truck, Dexter, I'm on my building inspector. I had taken it right after it got delivered to go out and do something. I said, I might consider going back into the field with a new truck like this. But it's comfortable, but it does, it doesn't have a lot of frill. But it gets the job done, but it's, you know, it's got, it's, it's nice to drive so you get from point A to B safely.
Sure.
Uh, and that, and it makes a good impression, so they just decal that yesterday when they did the decal work. Um, now, the only other thing that I'm, I'm going to, um, I'm going to look into related to back to personal services, um, just to inform you of that, uh, is that, um, I, I need to take a look and, and Janet and I talked about this. I need to take a look at the grading method that we, that was accomplished through the-
Clemson Nelson?
Clemson Nelson. I, I'm getting some conflict, some conflicting information here on the discussions that happened with the directors at that time, the director at that time and information that was part of the job description that was, may, may have been said, well, yes, you know, that's something that that person does and somebody's saying, well, not really. And it may have given a little bit of incorrect data. And, and the other thing I'm looking at simultaneously is I, is I study the name of our department. Many places, I see the term building inspection. Many places, I see the term building department. And so, nobody can really say, where did anything come from? Where's the history? Do we, is the name of the department by resolution or is it just by evolution?
We're gonna call it this?
Yeah, or we're just, we'll just name it that. So, as I looked at some of the job descriptions, I'm thinking to myself, well, does the person, there's a term clerk one, building department, say what that person really does because there's some tangible, technical aspects that that person has to know. And at one time, the state was and going to do, and they never really did it, uh, under Department of Commerce, was going to have a certification for a permit technician for building departments, where they would be licensed to be a permit technician. And they never fulfilled that. So, keeping that in mind, all these things going around, uh, one of the considerations that I was thinking about is, is does the name building department really define what we do? Well, it sort of does, but building inspections clearly does not. It gives a false kind of statement because people, oh, you come out and inspect buildings. Well, not all the time. Most of the things we do are related to construction. But yesterday, I got a nine-one-one from Kent Fire and a tree went through a house in Brady Lake and I had to come from Akron. I had to come from Akron to get over there to do an evaluation. Well, that's an inspection. But that's a unique situation. Nobody, if somebody had been sitting there, we'd be talking differently today. But it was quite catastrophic.
No, it was hurt, right?
No, it was, nobody was home. But it was a branch that's probably big as diameter as this table.
Wow.
And came through the roof and through the first floor. And had somebody been there, I guarantee you would be having a different discussion today. But thank goodness, they didn't and we told the people they can't live there right now, but the crew's on site to make it better. So, my point all is, you know, at some point in later, maybe look at a name such as Department of Building Standards, which kind of con, con, goes concurrent with the Board of Building Standards, our governing agency, uh, tells a little bit more. And then, that might drive some of the discussion on job description as well to be more concurrent with the types of things they do. I'm just letting you know we're looking into that.
Sure.
Checked with Chris Midori to say, well, this gotta be by resolution. So, he's doing some research through the ORC. Uh, so, at some point, we may come, I may come to you with that if necessary and get your opinion as well.
Sure. So, so the proposed name change, if it's allowable, is Department of Building Standards?
Standards, yeah. Yeah, it would be, that would be one I would like to use. Now, other departments use that. It's not, I didn't come up with that on my own. I'll, I plagiarized that from other departments, I'll tell you right off the bat. But shame on me, but it's, it's, it really speaks to what we do.
Re creating the wheel.
Yeah, it, it speaks to what we do. So, I'll be, again, as part of this overall package that I'm working on. And so, with that, the last thing you, you, you folks got is this, which actually is part of my quarterly report coming up shortly. But this is the summary for what we're doing in the budget, is how are we doing with our work and our income? And bottom line is, what you have here is, you have, the first page is, in eighteen, what did this quarter, what did this time of the year look like? And at that time, we get three hundred and seven thousand, well, just under three hundred and eight thousand dollars of income. So far this year, we're at three nine, almost three ninety-four. So, we're up quite a bit in our income statement for the work being done. And the last little stapled item, which again, I'll bring to our quarterly meeting, uh, quarterly review, are the projects that are commercial rated. You see, we're at now two hundred and ninety-five commercial projects for the year. By the last number on the last page, the nineteen dash two ninety-five, they're sequential, right out of the system.
I'm sure Dollar General's keeping you busy. I saw, every time I turn around, there's a new one popping up.
We, we have that and we, this, this, these numbers do not include Menards yet. We haven't, we haven't permitted Menards.
Ooh.
That's yet to come.
Oh, you mean the numbers, the numbers here?
The dollars, yeah, the dollars of three ninety-three, five oh one do not count Menards.
Randy, since I look at this in Spindles, it's on there.
Yes.
Did we get that issue of corrected?
We're working on it. Well, here's what we did.
Okay.
What we did was, we went to State Appeals Board and concurrently, the fire department, the building department, and then the State Appeals Board.
Which one were we talking about?
Spindles, the old Twin Star building, only on fifty-nine.
Gotcha.
They don't have, they don't have city water there. The building, when it was originally constructed, did not require suppressions, sprinkler systems. So, fast forward to two thousand and nineteen, they're doing renovations in the building. And renovations would require a sprinkler system, but they don't have water. So, to put the sprinkler system in, they gotta go down on Powder Mill Road, under the railroad, to get to the, to clear the water. And that's to the tune of, eh, between three-quarters and a million dollars for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar renovation of the building. The gentleman who bought Spindles also bought Roundup Lake. Uh, he's in New York. He's into the entertainment sector. And so, I had quite a conversation with him. Well, I was willing to go to the State Appeals Board and say, this has already started before I got here, to say, yeah, if you do alternate methods to make the building safe for its occupants, we can work with that. Fire alarms, things of that nature, more exits.
Sure.
Better lighting, all those types of things. And so, they concurred, the designers and they concurred, but we just can't say it's okay. Somebody else, just like our Board of Building Appeals here. If I say something is wrong, the board sees your due process, just like the courts. So, long story short is, they approved it.
Okay.
Okay. Well, now, we're still going through some other stages. And one of the things as far as the fire alarm was, we got their drawings and their, but their specifications. And then, our question was decibel level. So, we went over and did a decibel check. And the contractor said, nobody's ever done, no building departments ever done this before,